I'd like to call the August 11th, 2021, regular agenda, the regular meeting of the planning board, East Amwell Township to order. Please stand for a flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of our states of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
In compliance with the Open Public Meeting Act, this is a regular scheduled meeting pursuant to the annual meeting notice published in the January 21st, 2021 issue of the Hunteran County Democrat. A copy of the agenda was forwarded to the Hunteran County Democrat filed in the township clerk's office, posted on the bulletin board and township website on August 5th, 2021. Mark Castellano.
Here.
Tamara Lee.
Here.
Mike Mills.
Here.
Natalie Nelson.
Here.
John Saramba. Marnie Stetson.
Here.
Rick Wolf.
Here.
Tim Willie.
Here.
Jackson Ryder. Angela Lovisa.
Here.
And Gregory Ciacchio.
Yeah.
And Attorney Mazziars.
Here.
Agenda's good?
Yeah.
No corrections? Can I get a motion to open to the public for items not on the agenda, please?
So moved.
Second. Anybody in the public?
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody? Can I get a motion to close in the public, please?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed, extensions? Unfinished business. How quickly that came about. Farm project, Tam, you wanna?
Uh, yeah, so with the farm project, um, the mapping that, uh, the farm stand mapping, which has now become a farm of mapping, um, if the county commissioners approve it, that will probably go live in September. Uh, it's going, it's gonna not be an East Amwell map anymore now. It's gonna be a countywide map. Um, they just like, what they've done so much, they decided to roll it out for the whole county.
Mm-hmm.
Um, again, if the county commissioners approve it, um, then the county will come to the Ag Fair as, at the end of August and just start telling people about it, and then people can start signing up.
Great.
So, um, I, I told the county that if farmers in East Amwell need some help, that they should come, you know, just call me.
Mm-hmm.
So, um, we'll see how that goes. Um, now, the, uh, we're working a little bit on deer control. Um, the environmental commission and the Ag Advisory have decided to work together on that. I don't know, has there been any more discussion on that, Marnie?
Well, we just, we met since our last planning board.
Okay.
And we talked about it, and I met with Candace to go over everything that her committee had done.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and then we'll meet again, and then the environmental commission will meet again.
Okay, all right, and so I guess the, the two committees will decide who's gonna do what. Um, you know, there's education that needs to be done. People need to, the community needs to understand why deer control is necessary. Um, and then, you know, I think it would be helpful for the town to put, some sort of, come up with a strategy and put, help put a process in place. Um, but the farmers have said that would really help a lot if we could get that under control.
I found some notes, um, from deer management from years prior. I'll forward.
I think I have them.
Okay.
From, yeah.
Yeah, it was.
I got all those.
Okay.
Candace did. Thank you.
Okay.
But thank you, yeah, that's great. Um, and then Parks and Rec is talking about, and I might have mentioned this at the last meeting, um, having a pop-up farmer's market just to see how it goes, do a trial. Uh, they've talked about possibly having it here at the municipal building, or at Clausen, or at the Grange. Um, it's probably too much to put together for this fall, um, but we talked about sort of getting the word out, um, maybe emailing some of the farmers and seeing how much interest there would be, and then maybe doing something for the spring.
Okay.
So they're working on that, but, um, yeah, that, that's the gist of the farm project, except for the master plan part of it, so if you'll later just roll into that.
Um, yeah, I just wanted to bring up on the master plan, um, I want to form a subcommittee, and I've talked to Tam, Marnie, and Natalie, um, to be on it, and gonna work with Elena, and keep in contact and keep that as a, as a focus. Um, so I guess we have to have a vote on that, correct, that we're gonna form a subcommittee?
Right.
Do I have to have a motion first, or just a vote? Can I get a motion to form a subcommittee for the master plan?
So.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Roll call.
It'll need a roll call.
Okay. Thank you for taking that on, guys, I appreciate it, I really do. Go ahead.
Yeah, so, so Elena is working on, um, she's completed a detailed review in the field of existing uses in Ringos and on the highway. Uh, she's working on collecting, uh, you know, other information, environmental information and whatnot, so she's doing all the background work. Uh, the committee's gonna be really helpful, 'cause she's come to me, um, every once in a while with just questions as she finds stuff, and I'm fine with that, but I don't really want to be the only one that she talks to.
Yeah.
But it is good for her to have somebody to talk to in between meetings, so the committee will be helpful in that. She can bounce things off all of us, so that'll be very helpful. But she's making progress on that.
Good.
Um, yeah, so, uh, she's, she's on target, so that's the master plan. The work session, we had a work session end of last month. Um, we got a lot done. Um, we came up with a list of questions for all of the meetings that we want to have. We're talking about having a focus group with, uh, horse farmers, um, farm owners, but people who own farms but are not farmers, um, people who live around farms, and then we were going to do small, medium, and large farmers, and after talking about it, we thought we really just need small and large farmers. Um, and then also at the last meeting, we found out that Angelo has a superpower.
(laughing)
Yeah, a- and he knows how to work Excel.
He didn't duck in time, did you, Angelo?
That's why I'm at the kiddie table now.
You guys did a lot of job.
Thanks, Angelo.
Angelo has, uh, offered to take the farm inventory that we did at the very beginning of the farm project, and he's running queries, and he knows, he can explain it a whole lot better than I can, but he's helping us, um, sort of sort all the farmers, and, uh, we need another work session so we can go over what he's done.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we don't know where the dividing line should be between small and large, so we want to see what he's figured out, the, the analysis he's done, and then try to figure that out. Um, and then when all of this is done, we will bring everything, we're not making any decisions, but we're trying to come up with our recommendations. When all of this is done, we'll bring it back to the board, we'll show the board, um, not only where we sort of think that dividing line should be, but what the invitee list is for each of the different meetings, and, uh, also the list of questions that we, we want to use to guide those meetings. So we'll bring that back to the board, the board will approve it, and then we can start setting up these focus groups, so, um, so it, it was a very productive meeting, but unfortunately, we do need another work session.
Good.
Um, and the only date that everybody is available is September 9th, so I'd like the planning board to approve.
9th or 29th?
Twenty ninth.
I'm sorry, it's twenty nine.
Twenty ninth, right?
Twenty ninth, sorry. Twenty ninth, September 29th. So, um, if everybody, uh, if, if the board will approve another work session for the 29th, then we can get together again.
Can I get a motion to approve another work session?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, that's gonna have to be advertised again.
Okay.
Great. Um, Angelo, do you, are you gonna want to put that worksheet on a screen or something? Or the, uh, the inventory?
At the work session?
Yeah.
Yeah, I said I could bring my projector.
Okay. Um, Krista, can you just coordinate with Angelo, make sure he has everything he needs for that meeting?
I need two plugs.
Oh, really? Okay. All right.
We have a screen.
Okay, great, then we're set. All right, and that's it?
Great.
That's where we are.
Thank you very much, and you don't even get to lose your turn, Tam. Planning, planning board information education, you're really good.
All right, um, well, nobody contacted me to say that they wanted to hear about anything in particular, and really, you're welcome to do that, 'cause I can, you know, if there's something you guys want to know, I'm happy to do a little thing on it. Um, but, so I just picked this, the difference between C variances and D variances. Um, and I'll just go this, through this quickly, but if anybody has questions, I'm happy to answer. Um, it comes obviously from the law, uh, 40:55D-70 has four paragraphs, A, B, C, and D, and C is, covers the C variances, and D covers the D variances. C is also known as bulk variances, so it relates to the size of things. So if somebody wants to do something, um, and what they're doing varies in size from what the ordinance allows, they're gonna need a C variance. Um, if they are proposing a use that is not permitted by the ordinance, um, then that requires a D variance. Um, and, uh, the proofs are different for C and D variances, and then with respect to D variances, there are actually six different types, and the proofs are different for, slightly different, well, some are more different than others, but the proofs are different for each of those. Maybe someday we'll, we'll get into that, but if we have a big application, um, all of Elena's reports, especially if it's a D variance, should say within it what the proofs are that we should be listening for, because the burden of proof is on the applicant to, to demonstrate to us that we can grant the variance, that they have satisfied, uh, the burden of proof. Um, the, the key difference, uh, besides one being more oriented towards size and one towards use, is that C variances tend to affect the immediate neighbors, or maybe the people across the street, but a D variance is more substantial, and it could affect the character of the entire community. So the courts have said those should be harder to get, so the burden is higher, the threshold is higher. Um, another difference with a D variance, uh, we are serving, and when we, when we hear a D, D variance application, we are functioning as a zoning board. So we are a joint board, we, let's put it this way, we are a planning board, but we have also the power of a zoning board. Many towns have two separate boards, planning boards and zoning boards, in fact, we used to. Um, but when we, we hear a D variance, we are functioning as zoning board, which means our elected officials have to step off. They can't hear, um, zoning board application. The reason for that is, uh, oftentimes, and I, I don't know the specifics of our local ordinance, but oftentimes, if somebody wants to appeal our decision on a zoning variance, they have the choice of appealing either to the courts or the governing body. And if they appeal to the governing body, but two of the governing body officials have heard the case, then those two officials wouldn't be able to hear the appeal also. So that's the, sort of the origins of why the elected officials have to step off. Um, so, uh, when, when we hear a, a D variance, the first thing we do is figure out which one it is. Um, it's just simply D1 through 6. A D1 variance is the basic use variance, which means they want to, somebody, the applicant wants to have a use that's not permitted by the ordinance. So we listen to the proofs specific for a D1 variance. Uh, D2 variance is for a nonconforming, pre-existing nonconforming use, and there's a very specific definition of what that is. And if we ever hear one of those, um, first thing we have to do is verify for ourselves, based on the testimony from the applicant, that the, if the applicant is saying that their use is pre-existing nonconforming, does it actually satisfy the definition of that? Um, and, you know, I have the definition here, I don't need to, to go into it, but if they don't satisfy that very specific definition, then they can't apply for a D2 variance, and you have to treat it as if it was a D1 variance, a, just a plain old use that, that isn't permitted. Um, and again, the proofs for a D2 and a D1 are different. A D3 is a conditional use variance, so a conditional use is one where it's a permitted use as long as certain conditions are satisfied. If any one of those conditions are not satisfied, then they have to come in for a D3, and we will decide whether or not that use should still be permitted, even though they don't satisfy all of the conditions. And, you know, it's, it's not like there's any wiggle room there. They either satisfy all the conditions, or they come here for a D3. Um, and, and, you know, let me just say, we have a, a few parts of our ordinance that we could fix. We have a couple of permitted uses that have conditions associated with them. One of them was bed and breakfast, we've changed that. We made that a conditional use, because there really is no such thing as a permitted use that's subject to conditions, because definition of a conditional use is a permitted use that's subject to conditions. So there, there are a couple of parts of our ordinance, other parts of our ordinance we should fix, um, to turn these, these, uh, fluky permitted uses into what they really are, which is conditional uses. Um, D4 is a, a project where the floor area ratio is higher than it should be. Floor area ratio is simply a ratio between all of the square footage of all the buildings on a site relative to the size of the site. It's typically, um, typically we see this in commercial applications, and it's a way of making sure that commercial development doesn't get too intense. Some towns are starting to use this in residential development, because you're seeing these huge McMansions on postage stamp lots, so the houses are super big on the little lots, and towns are saying, no, that's not acceptable.
But wouldn't impervious surface take care of all, or no?
No, 'cause impervious. No, because impervious surface is just the, the square footage of the footprint. Floor area ratio, if it's a three-story building, you count every floor.
Right.
Right.
But between height restrictions and impervious, it wouldn't cover what you're talking about?
Not necessarily. It depends how intense the use is. I mean, for instance, you could have a warehouse that wouldn't be very tall, but be very spread out.
Right. No, I understand for commercial, but for residential?
For residential, not necessarily. Because.
It's hard to imagine given the impervious.
What, what happens, what usually happens is that the building setbacks, people are building from setback to setback. I mean, you say, you might say, the side yard setback is ten foot minimum, ten foot max, uh, ten foot minimum. People use that as a maximum, and they build from setback to setback. And that's not how it's intended. You're supposed to build within that, but at the very least, you, you can't get more than ten, no, closer than ten feet to the property line. But if people start filling up the entire, what's called the building envelope, which is the space within it, then the, the buildings just get huge.
Right, but that wouldn't conflict with our impervious surface calculations? Like a, a building that took up the entire lot, wouldn't it be disqualified?
Yeah, but two areas, for example, on Staten Island, they're doing exactly what you've described. They're buying up the postage stamp lots, and they're filling them with the house.
Yeah.
I don't know if there are impervious coverage.
That it don't always have it.
They may not have it.
Yeah, yeah.
No, I'm talking about here.
Oh, yeah, here, major, oh, yeah, maybe here. Although I don't know that we have a vast number of postage stamp sized lots here.
Right, just here.
Right.
But it's like Spring Lake has got to be like that. They're building massive homes.
No, I understand in other locations. I meant here.
I don't think we have floor area ratios for residential residences here. No, I don't think we do.
Okay.
I think we do have maximum square footage, some, in some of the undersized grandfathered lots. We have max, maximum square footage. But that's, that's completely different than floor area.
Yeah, but even, even like the undersized grandfathered lots, like in the Sauerlands or Amo Valley, we have max square footage that they're allowed to build a house or.
Yeah.
Well, sometimes when you put your farm into preservation, they give you a building envelope, but they limit the square footage of the house.
No, I don't, I don't think we have an ordinance for floor area.
I don't, I haven't seen it.
The difference between floor area and impervious, and you mentioned Spring Lake, they are doing this down the shore now. Because if you build, if you max out, you know, a house within a bed, building envelope, you're going to get a lot of bedrooms in there. As long as you can get the parking in accordance with RSIS, with the residential site improvement standards, if you can get the parking and you put all those bedrooms in there, you know that every single one of those bedrooms is going to be used.
Right.
Probably every weekend, cars everywhere. So they tried to limit the FAR to limit the amount of space you can have within the structure, within the house. So, you know, most of the towns that I represent are, are like this, where there are large lots and homes on large lots, so they don't have FAR for residential. But down the shore, Tom Rivers certainly does.
LBI.
LBI does it.
Yeah, no, I just, I just, I thought we were talking about heating.
No, no, each town will doesn't have FAR for, but we, we do have maximum floor area. Or it, it's the other way around.
It's square.
Square footage, maximum square footage.
So if somebody wants to exceed that, that's the size of something, so that's a C variance.
Right.
So, so theoretically, that means it should be easier to get than if it were, if we were using a floor area ratio standard. D five is also related to residential. It has to do with higher density. Again, the courts have said, if you want to build something that's more dense than what the ordinance allows, that could potentially change the character of the whole area. So that should be a D variance. And D six is height. And this really doesn't have anything to do with use, it's height. But again, the courts have said, if a building is too tall, it has the potential to change the character of the whole area. You see these a lot with churches because they have steeples. You know, or, or if, sometimes with buildings, I mean, if, you know, if there's a, if the height restriction is two and a half story and somebody wants to do three or four, it's not hard to get to the height that's more than 10% of what's allowed. And 10% might be less than 10 feet. So it's 10% of the maximum or 10 feet, but it's, you know, you go over either one of those thresholds and you're going to need a D six.
If you go over by less than that, it's C?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, so any questions about any of that? Hope that makes it a little bit clearer, but you know what you're looking for. But one of these days, we can go over the proofs. The proofs are found in the law, but, in the forty colon fifty-five D, the actual municipal land use law, but also a lot of them are found in case law. Because a lot of these were generated through case law, and then the municipal land use law was amended to take into account the new thresholds that the courts have set up, so.
Thanks, Tam. Appreciate that. Good information. Oral reports. Mike Mills.
We have nothing on prospect, no plan. Well, maybe we have an interview for the head secretary on Thursday. Until then, no meetings or anything.
Okay. Environmental Commission, Marty.
We met and agreed that we wanted to try and streamline and focus the goals. The goals from the previous year had been quite long and have not, hadn't made a lot of progress. So we talked about three major goals, first being to re-energize the green team and look into working towards brown certification so that we could maybe be eligible for some grants. We talked about outreach, increasing, increasing outreach. Allison, who's the, also a member in the new secretary, wrote a piece for the VIP. And she has an idea for some more, so that's great. And then our third one was to get to work on the deer management. Try to come up with something with the committee that we could bring to the.
It's going to be large. Okay, great. Thank you. Krista?
I'm good.
You're off, not going to be here next month. We're covered with that. We're all good?
Yeah.
Everything's fantastic? I don't have anything. Can I get a motion to approve the vouchers for voucher?
So moved.
Second.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can I get a motion to open to the public, please?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Open to the public. Francis? Is that rain or the air conditioner?
It's the rain.
That's from AIDS.
I've only got like 300 hours worth of lumber sitting on top of my truck. Great. That's only six two-by-sixes, Tim.
I thought the price came down.
Building comes down.
Francis Gavigan, 123 Wordsville Road. My question is, some of you may or may not know about the redevelopment plan that West Amwell is going to be doing along our border, basically from the Linvale New Market Historical District all the way up to the Messick Plumbing. It started with a request from an attorney with clients looking for an industrial location. And what they're wanting to do is to turn all of that area, some of which is Sauerlands, into this redevelopment plan, which will include all three forms of cannabis, growing, manufacture, sales, distribution. It's like open season, and their meeting is next Wednesday, I believe, at West Amwell. The mayor has stepped down and recused himself because he has a potential conflict since there's discussion of him buying the larger, largest piece there, which would be the mini golf to put something in the back, allegedly like a, a large warehouse kind of thing. You know, not mini mart, more like Walmart or other kinds of things. This is directly across from residential areas in East Amwell. Would involve a lot of truck traffic. The owners of the diner were approached because their property is next to the Teddake, and they go very deep. And the discussions that the son explained to me were like 22, 23 bays in and 22, 23 bays out. So I would think that residents of East Amwell, with that intensive level of traffic being added to what's already a problematic area, might be a concern. There was a, a study that they did, and I have all of these, and can post them on wherever, that basically went through and trashed the individual property owners and businesses that were there that, you know, they're an eyesore and they should go away. But the study did tease out the property across the street from Linvale Road, the Linvale New Market District, and talked about it being the site of the New Market Tavern and there being historical significance. From what I could read, that distinction did not make it into the plan that was introduced last month, and that they're going to be more than likely approving in a week. So if there's, there's lots of talk in the plan that was written by their zoning officer, not a planner, about.
He's a planner.
He is a planner?
Chuck, Chuck Lantini is a planner.
Then he's a planner about pedestrian ways, but there's no mention of the fact that it is on Route 31. Or across from things like Amwell Lake or residential. And if there were, while there are commercial, or conditions that could be put on cannabis growing, manufacturing, processing, or whatever, the prevailing winds, as I believe, are from West Amwell towards East Amwell. And it would be a handy little drive to just pop down to Amwell Lake and get your buzz and, and whatever, and then come out on the roads. So I would hope that anybody who is watching this or aware of this will think beyond, yes, business is good, development is good. We can't do anything about what West Amwell does, but we should at least show up and say something and hopefully try to get them to rethink some of the elements of it. Tamara, I don't know if you've taken a good, close look at the plan?
Yeah, I, I have. And, and I had a confusing conversation with Maria. She, she's the township administrator now over there.
She's the clerk.
Yeah, she's the township clerk. Okay. There was, they did what's called, well, the first report is a redevelopment report that determines whether or not certain lots satisfy the criteria for either redevelopment or rehabilitation. And this is based on redevelopment law. So that, that's why he was doing the lot by lot analysis. He did that in April. And then, once that was adopted, he did a redevelopment plan, which, which essentially proposed what should be done in that area. Now, the way normal redevelopment works is, once you adopt a redevelopment plan, you then go out for bid and try to find a redeveloper, and you designate a redeveloper to do the redevelopment. And it even says that in the redevelopment plan. But what Maria told me is they're not doing that. They're using the information from the redevelopment plan and putting it into a reexamination report. Exactly. It's like, what? That's exactly what I said. And, and then I imagine they're going to do a land use amendment. And I have, it, it makes no sense to me. That's not how you use the redevelopment process. And I don't know how they're doing that. So I'm confused.
The other thing is, is that contained within that plan or a number of elements to where the normal need for variances with setbacks or density or whatever could go, you know, would not apply. So there'd be limited ability for affected people to have anything to do about it. There is also a, up to 67% density of coverage in the lot. Great for the Sauerlands. And if they made some other criteria, they could get like an extra 10%. And there's also nothing about, you know, there's a lot of little lots there. There are a couple of, you know, there's like 20 between the diner and the golf course, and some more further down. But I could, I didn't see anything that would restrict, well, okay, you cobble together lots and you merge it into a major kind of industrial park. I mean, there's talk about walkways and all sorts of stuff.
Right.
I haven't seen a whole lot of people strolling down 31 that didn't have a shopping cart or.
I'm afraid to drive it.
Yeah, and that's already an issue.
Right.
I imagine there would, but from our historical district, our residents' interest, I would hope that maybe the board or township would consider at least some statement of concern about the impact on East Amwell and the sensitive environmental and other kind of issues. Back parts of some of the lots that are between your house and down towards, the back parts mark Sauerlands. And West Amwell has not been as generous in designating Sauerlands as maybe East Amwell has been. So I don't know how far it's going to go, but the fact of how it's gotten this far, and it's, I think the zoning is light industrial. But the original attorney letter, which I can send you, you know, he's looking for an industrial client's developer. Well, that might be fine in way north Jersey and Bergen and wherever this guy is from, or out on Route 1, but it is not aligning with Hunterdon County or certainly East Amwell. And I would hope that, you know, you might expect that there would be some residents along there who would want to be somewhat represented by people. You know, it's, everybody says, well, yeah, I'm in favor of marijuana, but not in my backyard. The only thing that marijuana had been discussed in all the time I was here, and I've been at the meetings, was just thinking way at the edge, having in a little area that is already approved for a store and things like that, a dispensary. That's very unlikely, given that Lambertville has approved four of them. The change in the inherent nature of our area of an industrial park being dumped on our doorstep or lap is concerning. And it's, while there is, you know, people can support business and this, but it's also quality of life, and it's not real neighborly. And I wanted to bring it to the attention of each and every one of you. And hopefully, some folks will be getting up and coming. And there's even, I've had people contact me about people being interested in Lambertville, about what's going on in West Amwell. I mean, if they want to have an industrial park, they've got, what is that, 179? And that's all within their borders. They could put it across from the gas plant or whatever that's down there. But dumping it, dumping it and changing and destroying the lives of small businesses and people who have been paying their taxes and doing their best to survive on both sides of the highway for a lot of years is, at best, disrespectful. And, you know, I would hope that there would be some concern expressed. You know, I had conversations with Maria, and she was very generous with sharing the plans and all of that. And it developed, I think, initially in their planning board, and then it went to the township committee, and they sort of do what they do. They might have a little different philosophy on what's good for the township and may not be able to see beyond potential ratables. You know, I can remember the discussions that I don't want on here for years, for the last 25 years, that when you do industry and you do ratables and you create jobs, you also increase your burden for affordable housing, things like that. Anyway, I'll be there. My camera's got permission to be there, so I'll be there.
Is that a planning board meeting or township committee meeting?
I think it's township committee.
Yes, township committee.
It's township committee, I found the agenda, it's, um...
Is it Wednesday?
Well, I, I didn't find the agenda. I found last month's agenda, and it shows the introduction of an ordinance, so I'm assuming next week is going to be the adoption, the second reading.
Of the redevelopment.
The second reading, second reading and adoption of, of that ordinance, adopting the redevelopment, approving the redevelopment plan.
Yeah, and that's on Wednesday, right?
Next Wednesday.
Yeah, it's a public hearing.
That's what it says, the eighteen.
Yeah. Yeah.
I, I don't, I mean, if they do it as a redevelopment plan, I don't understand how they do it, because in order to, for a town to do a redevelopment, they need to have some skin in the game. I mean, it's usually, you, you have properties where people haven't been paying their taxes, and the town can take some control or something. But I don't know that the town has all that many control over all that many of these lots.
They say there will be no eminent domain.
It's not...
But they did trash each and every one of the property owners, and who then got grief down upon their heads after the language in there by boards of health and things like that. To, shall we encourage somebody to maybe sell? And it's just wrong. I've never seen a plan or a study where the author didn't identify themselves, much less sign something. I had to ask, who did this?
Well, they should have had a hearing, they should have had a hearing before the planning board, that's the first step.
They did have hearings in the planning board.
Right.
But we didn't know about it. We weren't in, because we're across the street, we're in our own little universe.
Okay. Well, it should have been advertised twice.
It was advertised.
Okay.
I, I'm in that area, and I was notified, and I passed, that's, I passed it to the board, so.
Yeah, and you're right in the middle of it. Welcome to semi-country.
I, I reached out to, to West Amwell, basically because, you know, Elena is now working on ring doors in the highway. And I, I asked if Chairman Tomachuk, who's the, the planning board chair over there, would at least want to, you know, talk to us, because we're looking at the highway, they're looking at the highway, maybe we should chat. And I didn't get an answer.
Not that interested, shall we say? Unless it becomes a firestorm where people come out.
Well, he lives, he lives right across from the municipal building.
Mm-hmm.
Tomachuk.
Yes, that's right.
Yeah, he's got the, yeah.
That's right.
Yeah, you know, and I...
He's not worried about the highway.
No, you know, and the mayor's supposedly informally going to be buying the golf course, because the guy can't find people to want to run the golf course. And so it's not enough of a ratable. Can empathize and sympathize, but it's like, welcome to Route one, without, drop the three and you've got Route one, and that would be such a blight. And I have no idea what's going to happen to those, you know, the New Market Tavern, or things like that. Will people just figure, well, with this coming down, I'm going to sell out and cash out and go, and then we're going to be left, and the four people across the street who are still hanging on are going to be left with the mess and the loss of quality of life and values. So, you can't make this stuff up, but it happens in other towns, too. That's it.
Thanks, Frances. Can I get a motion to close to the public?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Everybody's gone over to correspondence. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Wait, wait, did we get the plan?
I have it, it's in my office, I'll bring it up.
All right. I like reading it.
I know, I'll, I'll bring it up.
Sorry, Rick. Didn't mean to blow over that so quickly. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everybody.
I want my plan.
Talk to Krista.
So, you show up, right?
It's usually right here. I come to the planner.